I know. I keep hearing of more and more people calling too. Oh, you did, yeah. Yeah, yeah. But, yeah.
That means you're not clear for a few more years now, right? We got away. Sure.
Organized here. I need this.
Yeah, I didn't see it. I don't think I got that one. Oh, no, I think I did get that one. It's so tough. I think I got one of those already.
Hold on one second.
Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please prepare for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance?
O Lord, help us to see beyond the narrow limits of our words and deeds so that we may fully do your will. Grant us the patience to listen, the ability to deliberate, and the wisdom to make decisions that are fair and pleasing in your sight. Help us to remember our goal is not to control, but to serve the people. In Jesus' name, amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Member Olson?
Good evening. Here.
Member Berantine?
Present.
Member Cuesta?
Present.
Member Martinez?
Present.
Member Wink?
Here.
Mayor Protim Russell?
Present.
Six members present.
Thank you. We'll move on to agenda item number five, consideration of minutes of the previous session. The minutes from the regular city council meeting on January 16th, I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve the minutes from the last meeting, January 16th.
Any discussion? Please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show, six ayes.
And then we also have the minutes from the special meeting of January 24th, 2018. I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve special meeting, January 24th.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show, six ayes.
Thank you, and moving on to agenda item six, recognition of scheduled public comment. Our first speaker tonight is Marcia McGilly, Executive Director of the Aurora South Metro Small Business Development Center. Good evening, Mrs. McGilly.
Good evening, Your Honor, and members of city council. My name is Marcia McGilly, I'm the Director of the Aurora South Metro Small Business Development Center, also known as the SBDC. In 2017, we began a very productive strategic partnership between the City of Inglewood and the SBDC. As your economic development team wanted to engage businesses on a more meaningful level, we became your boots on the ground for small business. We offer free and confidential, one-on-one consulting, workshops, and events. Through our collaboration in this last year, we have some impressive results to report. We've served over ninety-nine citizens with over two-hundred-and-fifty hours of consulting. Fifty-six percent of those were in business, the rest were startups or looking to start a business. We held eight workshops with ninety-eight attendees. We assisted with eleven, or ten, initiation and acceleration grants, and promoted scholarships to our courses through your scholarship program. As far as economic impact from those sessions, there were sixteen jobs created by your citizens, twenty-one jobs retained, three new businesses. Capital formation raise was over three-hundred thousand dollars. Clients indicated that through the assistance of the SBDC that they had over four-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars in increased sales, and there was one commercial contract awarded in one-point-five million dollars by one of those citizens. In 2018, what we will be doing is we will start with the Business Resource Expo on March 15th, which you will all be invited to. We will have food establishment workshops with Tri-County Health this year. With your manufacturing outreach, we are going to call out to your light manufacturing citizens, and we have a program with Manufacturers Edge together with the SBDC. We'll be reaching out to them and offering that program. We'll have a, convene a committee to do some kind of a small, Inglewood Small Business Institute or something like Emerging Leaders, we're going to convene a committee to research and investigate that. We will participate in the SBA Small Business Saturday Program, the Saturday after Thanksgiving, and we will do lunch and learn projects with the Inglewood Chamber. So we have broadened, found out more things that are requested and needed from us, and we have expanded our services. The Colorado Network has fourteen SBDC centers, and they have a rigorous certifying process for our business consultants. The process consists of sending in a resume, attending interviews by the director, passing five online modules. They deal with code of conduct, starting a business, consulting techniques, assistance and resource programs in the state, and finally, record-keeping and financial analysis. I'm pleased to announce that Darren Hollingsworth is the first Economic Development Staff member in the state of Colorado to be certified as an SBDC Network Consultant. This adds credibility and a credential to the City of Inglewood. It adds credibility in the outreach efforts to business owners. We can now track, measure, and trend data and analysis for those appointments, and that will be readily available to be reported back to you. At this time, I'd like to ask Darren to come up and receive his certificate. Congratulations, I want to say that your staff is wonderful to work with. It has been a truly meaningful, strategic partnership that we have with you, and we look forward to continuing that this year and beyond. This concludes my comments for the evening, thank you for your time.
Thank you, and Councilmember Olson?
I know we're gonna make comments later, but I did want to ask if we could get the presentation with all that great data. I started writing it down, but if we could make sure that our clerk gets that and can send it out to us.
Can I email it tomorrow?
Yeah, just to whoever.
Will do.
Congratulations, but we'll see more later.
Yes, congratulations. Councilmember Berantine?
In that same vein as what Councilmember Olson has asked for, will we get a calendar of these events that you're gonna be doing as well?
Yes, you will.
From our, from your new graduate?
We just put a flyer together with all the dates and everything, we were waiting on a location for that March event, so we will be sending that.
He's behind you waving and going, "He's got it covered, you must have trained him well." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Doug Cohn, an Inglewood resident who will address council regarding historic preservation. Good evening, Mr. Cohn.
Good evening. For a while now, I've been sharing parts of Inglewood's history with you. I want everybody to know how cool our town is, our history, and that it's worth saving and sharing. Tonight, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the General Iron Works and then ask you a big question. Some of you have heard some of the details before from previous talks. Here are some of the highlights. In 1922, five different engineering companies, Sterns Roger being the largest, formed a partnership. They'd been competitors for a generation and said, "We all have different skills and different interests, how about we work together as a unit of engineering companies?" And then they said, "We want to have one factory that'll make stuff for all five companies, and we want to call it General Iron Works." And then they decided that the employees of General Iron Works should own the company so that every time they got a paycheck, then they got shares of stock. That worked out real well in the long run. The plant opened in 1924 and was the largest employer for a generation. Here's some of the things that they did. In 1928, one of the Middle Eastern countries came and said, "We don't have enough fresh water. Is there anything that we can do? We have lots of ocean." And General Iron Works said, "Well, we will invent large-scale desalination, and you'll be able to extract fresh water from the ocean." And they did. The technology is still being used ninety years later. In 1930, they were approached by gasoline stations. People wanted to buy gasoline when the stations were closed. They invented the coin operation mechanism that allowed people to buy gas at the gas station, so next time you put money in a acquaintance lot, it was invented right here in Inglewood, Colorado. In 1938, they invented the soft-serve ice cream machine. In 1940, the postal service came to them and said, "We're getting so much mail, is there any way to make a mechanized mail sorting system?" They put it together. During World War II, General Iron Works was called the shipyard of the Rockies. They made bilge pumps for every single military ship that sailed, breech locks for the big cannons on the battleships. There was one company whose steel was strong enough for the sixteen- and eighteen-inch guns. They made torpedo tubes and airplane fuel enhancement that allowed the airplanes to fly two hours longer on the same amount of fuel. In 1950, General Mills came to them with a vision for a new product. They said, "We have mountains of potatoes, and this new product, we're thinking we'll cut them into really thin slices and cook them and put them in bags, and people will buy them. We have no idea how to do that." General Iron Works, Inglewood, Colorado, invented the process for making potato chips. Shortly after that, and you old timers will remember the TV commercial about how Cheerios were made, that they were shot out of a cannon. I know the guy who built the cannon. He lives over here on Akoma Street. During the space program, one company could build pressure tanks strong enough for the liquid hydrogen and the liquid oxygen. General Iron Works, Inglewood, Colorado. They invented much of the equipment for the safe storage and transportation of nuclear fuel and waste. In the 1970s, they invented the scrubbers for the coal-powered fire plants to clean the smoke coming out of the stacks. They had more than three-hundred patents during their lifetime. The company was bought out in 1982 and the plant shut down. The employees were invited to take home drawings and models and templates and patterns, and the employees got large buyouts on the stock that they held. Roger Kinney was one of the managers, and he decided to set up a company to continue the work at General Iron. He provided replacement parts, upgrades, and new products for General Iron for the next thirty-five years. He took home filing cabinets full of drawings and specs, many models and templates and patterns. Now, Roger is retiring, and he wants to donate all these items to the City of Inglewood and to the Historic Society to save the legacy of General Iron Works. There's about a box truck full of these artifacts and papers. The Historic Society can arrange to transport all the stuff, but we need to find a place to safely keep them. Is there a space in the building behind one of the walls where we could put a box truck full of stuff from General Iron Works?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cohn. Let me see if there's any questions for you, and actually, I'm not gonna ask that question yet. All right, thank you. We'll talk to Mr. Kek and see if we have room somewhere to store it. Thank you. Next, our next speaker is Nathan Hoag. He will address council regarding homelessness. Good evening, Mr. Hoag.
Good evening, members of the council. Thanks for giving me an opportunity to update you on this very important issue facing our city. My name is Nathan Hoag, I live at 3198 South Bannock, and I work at 3220 South Akoma. I'm here this evening on behalf of a network of agencies in Inglewood called Change the Trend, which was formerly known as the Homelessness Task Force. We've been around for about six months now, and we felt that it was a good time for us to update the council and the citizens of Inglewood on this issue and how far we've come. I'm happy to field any questions you have after I give you this update. Change the Trend is a network of representatives from Inglewood's nonprofit, police, and faith communities seeking constructively, to constructively engage the issue of homelessness. Network agencies include the severe weather shelter network, the Sacred Grace Church, Giving Heart Inglewood, Wellspring Church Cafe 180, the All Health Network, and the Inglewood Police Department. The network was formed via a collaborative effort between the Inglewood Police Department and Unite Inglewood. The effort has resulted in an unprecedented level of collaboration between various dimensions of the Inglewood community with regards to engaging this increasingly prevalent issue. Change the Trend recognizes that homelessness is a multi-dimensional, complex experience for both our neighbors on the streets and the broader community, which necessitates a holistic strategy of constructive engagement. Furthermore, the network recognizes that various demographics exist within the homelessness, the homeless community. Many individuals experience homelessness actively seeking their way out of their situation. These individuals constitute the demographic of temporarily homeless. Others, however, are not actively seeking their way out of homelessness. These individuals constitute the demographic of chronically homeless. Constructive engagement with each of these groups must look different. Change the Trend network members have been meeting on a weekly basis since September of 2017, working on developing a plan to engage both of these demographics. Network members have a deep desire to capitalize on the unique level of collaboration that this group contains. At the beginning of 2018, the network launched a resource navigation program seeking to support members of the temporarily homeless community in their journey towards greater stability. By utilizing the strengths of all the network agencies, this program will have the capacity to surround our neighbors on the streets with a community of more holistic support than anyone, one agency could do on their own. Thus far, the program's first participant has gained access to mental health, support, legal counsel, a faith community, a telephone, and proper personal identification. All these elements are significant steps towards greater stability and productivity in this person's lifestyle. Currently, the network is vetting two or three more participants to, for entrance to this program. In January of 2018, the Change the Trend partnered with Inglewood Police Department to help support the effort to clear the banks of the Platte River for the necessary flood mitigation work that needed to be completed. On January 4th, the Impact Unit, along with several representatives from network agencies, went to the river and communicated with the members of the homeless community who were staying there that the banks needed to be cleared. Network agencies were able to offer resources and support to these individuals, which added a deeply beneficial level of compassion to the process. In the coming months, Change the Trend has plans to accomplish two goals. First, the network plans to expand its resource navigation program in order to support as many members of the temporarily homeless community as possible. Second, the network plans to increase its public profile by hosting a series of forums aimed at catalyzing constructive community dialogue regarding homelessness. Above all, Change the Trend network, as well as each individual network agency, hopes to be an effective resource to the entire Inglewood community as it experiences and engages the growing issue of homelessness in our city. That's all, thanks.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Hoag? Councilmember Olson?
I appreciate you coming and updating us on some of this, really appreciate it. Are there plans for communicating some of these events for the dialogues in terms of getting that word out to folks like the Inglewood Chamber or ACE? Let's just make sure we have, because a lot of those folks would really probably benefit, we all would.
Yeah, once we have them planned and have a calendar of events and locations and times and all of those, we'll communicate those as broadly as we possibly can. We'll make sure council knows, Chamber, a variety of other agencies around the community.
Great, thanks for coming.
Thank you, are there any other questions for Mr. Hoag? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much. Our next speaker is Kathleen Bailey, an Inglewood resident, will address council. Good evening, Ms. Bailey.
Good evening. I want to first thank all of you for, there's been a really wonderful change in the atmosphere of the dialogue between city council, at city, at study sessions and in city council, and it's been a pleasure. And unfortunately, I'm gonna be very critical again today, so I apologize in advance. Behind all the pomp and illusion presented by city management, city council, as care and concern for our citizenry, the entire purpose of the Inglewood Forward Comprehensive Plan is simply an ill-conceived strategy to solve the economic difficulties put together by the very same council and management whose chronic mismanagement caused those economic difficulties to begin with. And although they have removed the written declarations that the average Inglewood citizen's income and small-size homes are a deterrent to the goals set out in the comp plan, what city planners, management, and council members actually think about the average Inglewood citizen is blatantly clear. Identifying our average Inglewood citizen's homes, home size, as undesirable begins on page 2-4. Quote, "The city must evolve its housing stock. The older age of the homes contribute to the smaller average size of the homes in Inglewood in comparison to the homes built in 2010. And throughout the comp plan, our homes are tagged as a priority to replace. Our average Inglewood citizen's incomes are identified as also an undesirable deterrent" beginning on page 2-9. Quote, "Lower-than-average incomes are prevalent in Inglewood, however, and could be a deterrent, and are tagged as a priority goal to replace with citizens with higher incomes. Our average Inglewood citizen's education attainment is even identified. Thirty-one point eight percent college degrees, and is tagged as a priority to increase that number of college-degree citizens in Inglewood" on page 4-244. And on page 2-19, our planners, management, and council actually had the ignorant audacity to blame Inglewood students for Inglewood's underperforming schools. Quote, "Today, sixty-seven percent of all students receive free lunch due to low incomes. Our learning English is a second language and/or requires special education. Partly due to the challenges these children face, the school district is generally underperforming." Unquote. Our Inglewood schools have been underperforming for many decades, not just the last ten years, when student populations had decreased by twenty-five percent. And in fact, for decades, our managers and councils have perpetually neglected our critical infrastructure and our historically underperforming schools, even while Inglewood had the income from Cinderella City Mall. And when the Cinderella City Mall went under, instead of tightening their spending, Inglewood management and council decided that this period of major loss in city income from the mall was a good time to abandon their existing, fully-functioning Norgland Building and give themselves a bigger and fancier city hall at taxpayers' expense. And while continuing to ignore infrastructure and underperforming schools, city members, council members, thought it more important to spend almost an additional million dollars more in citizens' money every year to pay the Museum of Outdoor Arts to reside at their new big expensive civic center. Now, these brilliant government members, governing members, concluded that if they could just add more consumers by increasing the population density, replace our average Inglewood citizen with preferred citizenry with more college degrees, higher incomes, and larger homes, and start bike paths and extend roads, all connecting Inglewood shops and businesses, draw in an influx of substantial businesses who will offer our citizens a living wage, culminating in a citizen population who live, works, and plays within our small, six-mile city, who will spend most, if not all, of their disposable income all day long within the City of Inglewood. And then, Inglewood will be prosperous. And what is terrifying is, they have already changed Inglewood zoning codes, 16-27 rezoning item C and 16-28 PUD E1. Because they have already changed the zoning laws, the only part of this delusional plan that is guaranteed to come to about is the increase in population density, including PUDs and accessory dwelling units, disrupting and diminishing our beloved, modest, tree-filled R1 single-family zone neighborhoods where we average citizens live and invested. I am calling on this new council to scrap this comp plan or at least place an oratorium on any rezoning of R1 single-family neighborhoods and remove from our codes any changes that resulted from this ill-thought-out comp plan, as well as eliminating from code any exceptions within the code that can be made as a result of this comp plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, we will comment. Thank you, Mrs. Bailey. Our next speaker is Joe Anderson, an Inglewood resident, will address council regarding civility. Good evening, Mr. Anderson.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor Protim. I'm here to address Ms. Bailey's comments from the last council meeting. I would like to provide some suggestions for how council members might maintain civil discourse and respond to baseless accusations. But before I do that, I want to get philosophical for just a minute. Every significant decision we make is made out of either love or fear. Those are the two basic motivations for life. When I'm operating out of fear, my instinct is to cut myself off from others in order to protect myself. My neighbor is out to get me or get what belongs to me, so I resist them. I see them as an enemy. I certainly wouldn't want to risk a friendship with my neighbor because I'm afraid of what would happen if they let me down. When I operate out of fear as a parent, my children suffer. No, you can't play outside. Don't touch that, you might get hurt. Helicopter parenting is bad for kids. Fear isolates us. And here's the paradox. When we operate out of fear, we want to avoid risk, but in doing so, we risk everything. Our identity, our place in community, our future. Love, on the other hand, love for others, love for our family, love for our neighbors, looks risky. To love others, we must know them, and to know them means being known by them. To love others means to free them from our attempts to control them. When we love, it feels so often like we're risking our very selves. But without love, it is impossible to realize the most profound reward in life, the joy of knowing love returned. The opportunity to be a part of a community, a part of other people. This applies to each of you as leaders on council. Your decisions are made out of either fear or love. It will always be a temptation to operate out of fear. Fear of the most vocal or angry citizens, fear of litigation, fear that if you don't appear to support the right things, you won't get elected next time. Even worse, you could use the fear of citizens to build a vocal constituency that would help you get re-elected. I would warn you against that path. Fear leads to paralysis and destruction. If we live in a city that is ruled by fear, we won't take steps to move into the future. Our infrastructure will deteriorate, business and retail growth will stagnate, services will falter, and our budget will fall short. Worse, if we live in a city ruled by fear, we will see others as enemies. First, those most different from us, newcomers perhaps, developers, business owners, the homeless. Then, city staff, those who live across town, then even our very neighbors will become our enemies. Under the rule of fear, every baseless accusation will carry the day. That brings me to Ms. Bailey's comments. As much as I hate cancer and share Ms. Bailey's sympathy for those suffering, there is no conspiracy. The government is not engaging in mind-control using chemtrails. The moon landing really did happen. 9/11 was not an inside job, and there's no cancer-codging sludge cover-up. There have been two studies to prove it. Furthermore, it would make no sense to blame our current city manager who was hired after the residual holdover happened and worked to fix it. Council members, it is neither wise nor conducive to civil discourse to give an ear to baseless accusations and let them stand. This duty falls first to Mayor Protim Russell when decorum calls for an immediate response. The remaining council members can and should call out baseless accusations for what they are during council member response. Love looks outward towards others in compassion. Those who love cannot be held in bondage to the dictates of fear, so the accusations that flow from a fear-driven conspiracy theory won't rule the day. I believe that the future of this council and the future of our city will be guided by love instead of fear, but it won't happen by accident.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, let me see if there are any questions for you. Let me see if there are any questions for you. Seeing none, thank you very much for your comments. And now we'll move on to Agenda Item 7, Unscheduled Public Comment. First up is Tim Nichols. Scapegoating by city leaders. Good evening, Mr. Nichols.
Scapegoating city leaders, ma'am.
Pardon me?
Scapegoating city leaders.
Oh, not by city leaders. Okay, thank you.
Not by city leaders. That would be a whole different problem. Thank you for hearing me. Back in the day, when something bad happened in town, people would find some poor old woman with a wart on her nose and accuse her of witchcraft, and she's hexing the cattle and drive her out of town. We like to think that we've come a long way past that. I'd like to think that we've come a long way past that. But it's a very human thing, and it makes us feel like we have maybe a little more control over a big, scary world than we really do. And unfortunately, as much as I'd like to think that we're past that, when I watched the footage of last month's council meeting, I saw it play out in action. And that was, that was kind of disappointing. Some people have died of cancer in Inglewood. There was some thought that perhaps the stockpiling of the sludge at the wastewater treatment facility had some role in that. There were two studies paid for by the city to see if that was in fact the case. And it seemed fairly plain to me, as I watched Ms. Bailey's presentation, that she is simply not going to be satisfied until somebody burns for this. But while that's a tremendous, it's a completely understandable impulse, unfortunately, the facts just don't appear to be there, and it's literally insane. The stockpiling problem has been solved. We sought the counsel of two independent experts on this problem. Those results are in. The link is simply not there. And finally, and crucially, and the reason I'm willing to use a word like insane about this, is that even were that the, if the problem were what it's claimed to be, that was two city managers ago. Demanding a human sacrifice of the current occupant of the position does not really deal with the problem if that were the problem. As a citizen, I'm a little disappointed that I didn't hear anything back from council when that presentation was made, and when someone stood here and asked for two of your employees' heads on a plate, that you sat there quietly. That's a little disappointing to me. I would, I would hope for better for you, better from you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Let me see if there's any questions for you. Seeing none, thank you very much for your comments. Next up is Mr. Earl Huff. His topic is the committee. Did you want to speak this evening, Mr. Huff, or?
No, I didn't.
Okay, thank you very much. Then, Mr. Tim Morgan. Be Good opening. Good evening, Mr. Morgan.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Protim and City Council of Inglewood. My name is Tim Morgan, and for the ones who doesn't know me, I am the Director of Community Relations for Be Good Ventures LLC. We're a vertically-injured cannabis company operating in the Inglewood metro area with approximately 14 licenses. I'm here in front of you tonight to share glorious news. We expect to be opening our store on 11 West Hampton on Wednesday for a soft opening, and once we have worked out the various kinks there might be, we're opening our fourth location. We would like to invite city staff and city council for grand openings sometime in the end of this month. We also, earlier, last month, signed up to be part of the Chamber of Commerce in Inglewood, and are generally just looking forward to start being really involved in the community. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. Morgan? Councilmember Olson?
So, it's good to hear you're doing the chamber. Have they, are you going to involve them in a ribbon-cutting of any sort?
That is the plan. Randy Penn has been out, was out sick last week, and I wanted to talk to him. So, but, but he is involved, and we're gonna try to, it's literally right across the road from our own store, so, so it would be very logical to include them in as much as possible.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. Next, we have Jerry Walker, speaking about code enforcement. Good evening, Mr. Walker.
Good evening, Ms. Russell, City Council. I want you to close your eyes for a minute, and imagine your child, or your grandmother, or someone in a wheelchair trying to negotiate a sidewalk covered in three inches of ice seven days after the last snowstorm. Now, we have code against that. We're not, I mean, we're civilized. We have a, a snow removal code, which proudly says that within 12 hours after the last snow, you have to have all that snow and ice removed from your sidewalk. So, I met a citizen since I'm on the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee. I had a citizen talk to me, and he said, "You know, every night I walk to work, I have to walk down the sidewalk that's covered with ice." And I said, "Well, call code enforcement. That's what they've told me to tell you to do." He said, "I did." I said, "What did he say?" "They said the ice would melt." Think about that. Yes, it will. June, July, I don't know. So, I called code enforcement. The next day after, I had talked to two answering machines, as a matter of fact. The next day when I, they called back, they told me that there was a problem because the building that the ice was in front of shoveled their ice, snow and ice, and then CDOT came by and threw it back up on the curb, and that they were fighting against CDOT and the building and everything else. And I thought that that was a nice interpretation of the code. Not an enforcement of the code, but an interpretation of the code. And I think that we have a problem when people start interpreting code. I think if it's up to the building owner to have it removed, then it needs to be removed. No matter what gets thrown back on there, it should be removed. Then I found out that this problem's been going on for years. Now, I'm on the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee. First time I've ever heard of it. Brand-new stuff. So, I guess we can just take this snow removal thing and just kind of throw that away. I, I'm just curious as to who's supposed to enforce the law the way it's written, not the way it's just, you know? And then I came to find out from Mr. Fatturo at the code enforcement place, that there are a number of places like that in our city where the ice just stays on there until it gets warm enough to melt. And for the same, pretty much the same reason, snow gets thrown back over. I guess my question is, how do we solve this problem other than just enforcing what the code is? Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Walker? Seeing none?
Hold on, I did. Do you have a list of the areas that you were talking about, you were referring to?
Well, I have the one that I reported. They did not give me a list of the other areas, but I know where some of them are. I can tell you that if you leave Clarkson going westbound on Hampden on the south side of the road, you're going to be on icy sidewalk. If you leave McDonald's going westbound on Hampden on the south side of the road, you're going to be in three inches of ice for at least a week or two, depending on how warm it gets after the next snow. So, this was seven days after a snow, and the ice was still three inches thick. It's in the shade. Yes, it will melt eventually, but who are we kidding here? It's a safety hazard. It's a, it's an infraction of the American Disabilities Act. I mean, it's a federal law. It's not just our code. It is a federal law. You have to have that sidewalk open for people with disabilities. That would mean in a wheelchair, blind, whatever. Think about a blind person coming up on that sidewalk. Think about a person in a wheelchair coming up on that sidewalk. I, I, I don't get it. I mean, it's not the, it's not the first time for code enforcement. I have some pictures of you, trashcans on the sidewalks that have been there for one year, and we've showed code enforcement an actual picture of these, and every time I talk to them, they go, "We can't talk about it right now."
Can you give us the clerk?
I'm sorry?
Can we get the pictures, or did you just have them for you?
I would be glad, may I bring them up?
Give them, oops.
Give them to the clerk, please.
To her.
I can approach. I'm not going to hurt anyone.
No, I mean, she just, it's, don't take her job away from her either.
It's her job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Were there any other questions for Mr. Walker? Seeing none, thank you very much for bringing that to our attention. We will have some comments. Thank you. Next is Idemay Nickel, speaking about the Veterans Memorial. Good evening.
I'm Idemay Nickel, and I live at 4740 South Lupin Street. I'm from the Inglewood Historic Preservation Society, and Kay Howard, who was the little lady that got the Veterans Memorial up at our high school, which there are a lot of people that are totally unaware that we have a historic monument at our high school, one of the very few around the whole country. So, it's something that is quite an honor, and we respect very highly. I gave all of you council people a picture, so if you haven't seen what our memorial looks like, this is what it looks like, and there's handouts. For all of you out there, there's handouts on the table, so please take one. Also, we are, we are still selling pavers, so if anyone would like to buy a paver for a veteran, for yourself, for an aunt, uncle, grandfather, you do not have to live in England. And so, we're also selling pavers that will go around this beautiful monument, and there again, you can pick up the information on the table in the back. And then this year, we are asking for sponsorships. So, any of you that would like to give away some of your money, or if you have a business, or if you know of a business, or do you work for a business, please pick this up on the table in the back. One side is a letter to the business, and the other is sponsorships. We'll have Veterans Memorial sponsorship, donor levels, and if any of you would like to donate, you could pick out one of these levels, and you will read what this, what we are going to give back to you as a donor. Also, anything below this, I think the lowest we have on here is 300, but we take any donation, 25, 50, 100, anything that you would like to give. One of the things we're going to start this year is we are going to, right now, it's only going to be 5%, but all of the money we can raise with 5%, we've already talked to the Inglewood High School, and we want to do a scholarship to the Inglewood High School, and they'll have to fill out a form, we have that, and they will get a scholarship. If we raise a lot of money, there's a possibility we, we could raise that to 10%, but we want to involve our schools, our high school, and this is one way that they can, they can write something about the, be involved with us in the memorial. And so, we're hoping to raise a lot of money so that we can not only keep our memorial up, but also we can involve our schools. And we're going to try to, this year, get our information out to all the schools, in the high school, and, and get a lot more word out than we have been able to in the past. So, thank you very much, and everyone in the audience, please pick up a piece of literature. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Idemay. Does anyone have any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Idemay, is there a cutoff for the pavers? What is the cutoff?
It, we, it will go through March 1st, and we have to have those in because they have to be sent out to be engraved. And then they send them back to us, and then the high school will put them in to add to the pavers that are already up there. And if no one has seen our memorial, please go up to the Inglewood High School and see our memorial. Like I say, it's one of the very few, in fact, it's the only one that we know of that has a beautiful stone like ours. It's a three-ton Colorado rose granite stone, beautiful, with all of the military emblems embedded in bronze into the stone. And we want to keep adding pavers, so, thank you. And I'll be in the back if anybody has any questions on your way out. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Idemay. Do we have any responses to public comment? Councilmember Berentine?
I wanted to congratulate Darren Hollingsworth for his work. Apparently, yet another honor, well-deserved, so thank you very much for your work. Doug, maybe, maybe Rita wanted to know just how many Cheerios you could shoot out of a cannon. I don't know. We may have. It's a, it's an event for summer, maybe. To Nathan Hoag, thank you very much for the information on what changed the trend is doing. I had an opportunity to talk to probably about 2025 homeless people after I knew that they cleared the plat out. I went and talked to as many groups of people that I could because they obviously kind of were displaced again. And they really were consistent in saying that they didn't know, that they didn't have services, that there weren't that communication or that availability. Our city manager had done such a beautiful job when we had had the problems with the hotels, and I had really hoped that in the future, if we do that, that both councils should be notified. I know, I found out that the city of Sheridan, their council was notified before the plat was cleared out, and I wish that our council had as well, so that maybe we could have had a little bit more information on it. We found out quite a bit about this during the interviews that we were doing by people who just saw people sitting on the side of the road and, and not, you know, just giving that impression to the community that we had kind of put them out there a little lost, so maybe we could coordinate things a little better. I'm, I'm sure there was an effort tried. I know that our city manager is a, a very compassionate man, and I know that the, the effort was made, and I did talk to him. But I have to deal with what I'm hearing from both the population that was displaced down there, and rightfully so. We had to do work down there. It's not safe down there. I talked to women who were living down there. I mean, they're, obviously, this is not a situation that we would condone or want to have going on, whether we were clearing out the plat or not. So, maybe we can try and do a little bit of work, a little bit more collaborative, again, and also maybe do a little, something with the Tri-Cities, and, and that meeting's coming up soon, to try and make sure that all of us are on board prior to it going on. But I appreciate that, I mean, at least there's some effort being made. I hope that, I mean, I have a lot of trouble on the 4300 block. Unfortunately, we're giving hard is, where there's been an assault of some business owners down there, and we really need to try and see if we can address some of the issues that are going on. It's one thing for the organization, or even the church, to have somebody who's asked them to leave because you know they have a problem, but to put them into the community and, and the people next door don't know that that person's been a problem, so we have to make sure that there's some, it, it just doesn't end when you shut the, the door and kick them out of your facility to keep those people safe, that we make sure that we have an awareness of what's going on and what we're, we're doing to the community when we do that, too, not just protecting the people within your doors. But I do appreciate the work that they do. Jerry, thank you very much for the ice on the sidewalks and the trashcans. I know that the city manager, I got a call back from a gal who had come about a dumpster on a yard, and I know that we are able to take care of some of these issues, but we do need to do it on a consistent level, on what the law is, and not that it's subjective or when somebody complains to council or a councilperson. And you are on the code enforcement board, and I appreciate the work that you do, and we do have to get this addressed. I know the mayor's on that, so hopefully, we can get a report back from the code enforcement board on exactly what they're doing to address both, both the trash and the ice issues. I am going to take up the challenge from the- I am going to take up the challenge from the faith-based several people that talked that I know work with our city manager, and our city manager is an extremely professional, compassionate man who works for the city as we work for the city. And every citizen has a right to come up here and address their elected officials, to whatever extent that they believe that they should address their elected officials. I do not believe that as professional and compassionate and caring as Mr. Kek is, he would ever want this council to think they are in a position where we are supposed to defend him from any citizen coming forward with a complaint or a concern. That would be inappropriate. Also, what I think is inappropriate is any of us are targets. We are elected. Those citizens in this community pay their salaries. Everybody who's up here, we're working for the city, and if they have a complaint, they have a concern, this is when they have the opportunity to bring that forward. When you're espousing love, I find it disappointing and sad that you talk about a fellow citizen and equate her with witchcraft and call her insane. I find that extremely offensive. That's citizen to citizen, and I really do not appreciate this forum being used for citizens to attack each other. We are prepared for that. City manager over there has been the city manager for several communities. He is a professional, and he can handle and go through the process of what's legitimate of a concern and what's not, but I find it reprehensible for you to come and attack another citizen in this forum. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson.
Thank you. To those of you that came forward, I think several things have been covered that I was going to raise. I did want to suggest one further action for the code enforcement, that we make it a council request of those addresses. I'm sure there's some process that's been going on, and if it pleases the council, that all of us would want this. If we could get a council request on where we are with that and how some of these, I know that this has been ongoing, even residents in my area on the south side struggle with this, so it's not an easy fix. So I'd appreciate it. The other thing is that I do appreciate the comments from Mr. Nichols and others in talk, and Mr. Anderson, Reverend Anderson, probably. I do think there are times I don't agree with, you know, attacking anyone here. I do think that sometimes council sits here not knowing exactly how to support people who've been attacked in some way or another or blamed or whatever. I guess blaming is better than attacking. And so I appreciate any wisdom that you have on ways to do that that does not cut off this free speech and the openness that we want to have here. So would love to dialogue further about what you could have seen that would have been different. I do remember the one occasion that you were probably referencing, and I left feeling uncomfortable with not having said something, but we're also in a very odd situation with one of these cases. So appreciate the feedback.
Thank you. Councilmember Questa.
Thank you. I did want to echo the congratulations for Mr. Darren Hollingsworth. That's certainly commendable, and I really appreciate you getting that credential. Congratulations to Mr. Morgan and the Be Good Company for finally crossing the finish line and the grand opening being around the corner. I would agree with Mr. Walker. That is certainly a problem that for seven days that there is ice on the sidewalk. I know that that is well traversed there on that stretch of Hampton, and that's something that I'm sure alarms everyone on council, and we'll look into that promptly. Idem A. Nichols, that is a very, very noble endeavor that you guys are putting forth. I look forward to buying a paver myself, so thank you guys for putting that together. And Ms. Bailey, I found some of the language alarming as well, just how some of the, some of our neighbors are described in the comprehensive plan. And I know it's subtle, and it might not be meant to insult or group people, but I think that we get into a dangerous area when we do start to group people by the size of their home or their income or educational level, and that's something that I'm going to take a look at further. I know that the comprehensive plan will come up before council again for some fine tuning in February or March, and I appreciate you alerting us to that because I think that that is concerning. Thank you, Mayor Potem.
Thank you. Councilmember Wink?
Thank you. I know it's past my time to ask questions, so I would like to suggest that Mr. Morgan, perhaps, if you do work with the council, with the Chamber of Commerce, excuse me, and Randy Penn, I imagine we will get a communication about the time. You said on Wednesday, but I'm just curious about what time and more of the logistics. So perhaps you can communicate directly with us, or we can get something directly through the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also would like to thank everyone for coming this evening, and I'm very thankful for our relationship with the South Metro Small Business Development Center, and congratulations, Darren, for all the hard work as well. I do appreciate every one of you coming. I agree that it is difficult, and this is a time for free speech, and the truth is, we don't always necessarily respond properly, and, but there, it is uncomfortable sometimes, even for us. And so I appreciate your coming to speak, especially those of you from the faith-based community, and the thing that gives you the right to speak is the same thing that gives the, Ms. Bailey, the right to speak. And so I appreciate it and would love to have more feedback individually if that would work out. So thank you all very much for coming. Moving on to agenda item number eight, communication proclamations and appointments, and tonight we are going to be appointing new board and commission members, and I just want to let you all know that boards and commissions are opportunities for our citizens to get involved in our local government. The City of Inglewood has 20 boards and commissions, and the board and commission appointments occur twice a year, generally in February and July, and if any of you are interested who are here who haven't applied, there is an application deadline and interview schedule available online. Also, the applications for boards and commissions are there, and I would encourage you, if you would like to get involved in our city government, to go online and find out more about that. So with that, I actually would like to ask council to form a reception line down in front of the dais, and we're going to call the new appointees up to give you, let's see, a certificate and also a little token of our appreciation. And so if the city clerk would call the names after we get up in front of the dais. Thank you.
All right. For the Alliance for Commerce in Inglewood, we have Nathan Hoag as a regular member. Drevis Ridley as a regular member. And Judith Dunlop as an alternate member. For the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, we have Erin Rieger as a regular member. And Kristin Schlerle Dorn as an alternate member. For the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee, we have Dale Harris as a regular member. For the Cultural Arts Commission, we have Martin Gilmore as a regular member. For the Election Commission, we have Judith Dunlop as a regular member. And Doug Cohen has been reappointed to the Election Commission as a regular member. For the Historical Preservation Commission, we have Cash Parker as a regular member. Right. For Keep Inglewood Beautiful, we have Brianna Johnson, who's been reappointed as a regular member. Camille Kipers, reappointed as a regular member. Meg Griffin, reappointed as a regular member. Robert Stevenson as a reappointed regular member. And Kristin Martin, reappointed as a regular member. For the Malle Center Trust Fund, we have Earl Huff, who has been reappointed as a regular member. For the Non-Emergency Employees Pension Board, we have John Moore, reappointed as a regular member. For Parks and Recreation Commission, we have Amber Christopher as a regular member. Kate Truesdale as a regular member. And James Woodward has been reappointed as a regular member. For the Planning and Zoning Commission, we have Judy Brown as a regular member. Carolyn Marshall as an alternate member. And Mike Freemeyer has been reappointed as a regular member. For the Police Pension Board, we have Cash Parker as a regular member. All right. For the Public Library Board, we have Amy Wilson as a regular member. And Guy Mason has been reappointed as a regular member. For the Transportation Advisory Committee, we have Neil Sarno as a regular member. Greg Naddison as a regular member. Mark Monroe as a regular member. And Patrick Lewis as an alternate member. All right. For the Urban Renewal Authority, we have Zion Spurgeon as a regular member. And Linda Cohen has been reappointed as a regular member. For the Water and Sewer Board, we have Don Roth, who's been reappointed. And Clyde Wiggins, who has also been reappointed.
I want to thank every one of you who came out this evening, and we appreciate your service to the city, and we look forward to working together with you. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Yes. Service is invaluable.
Okay, moving on to consent agenda items, 9A1, A2, 9C1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve those stated.
Second? Any discussion? Are you pushing your button?
I'm voting, yes.
You're voting? Okay, seeing no discussion, please vote.
All votes are made cast. Let the record show, six ayes.
Moving on to agenda item 11C1, South Broadway Electrical Infrastructure Improvement Awards. Staff recommends council award by motion a construction contract in the amount of $206,492.84 with WL Contractors Incorporated of Arvada, Colorado, for the electrical infrastructure improvements as part of the Broadway Streetscape Improvement Project. Our staff person is Engineering Manager Paul Weller. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm here to recommend the approval or the award of this contract, give you a few brief bullet points on how we got where we are. We bid this project out, and we had only one bidder give us any kind of, gave us a bid, and that was for almost $500,000, which just was not workable. So we looked at what we could do to get this project continuing on, and we looked at the, eliminating the work in the 3300 block and then value engineering the plans that were done to try to reduce the cost. So we got a cost down to the contract amount that's before you, and we will be completing the work in the 3400 block as originally planned. So we're getting new electrical system, new conduits, new wiring, and new outlets for that block. WL Contractors, again, was the sole bidder, and they're a valued partner with the City of Inglewood. They've done many other projects with us, so I feel very comfortable working with them, and they are scheduled to begin immediately upon approval of their contract. They will be submitting the plans to the Building Department for the review and electrical permit. So with that, I'd like to open up to any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions? Councilmember Olson.
Thank you for this information. Is there a reason that you can ascertain for why there was only one bid? When are people concerned?
I think it's the... I think it's the...
Building spree?
Construction overall, yeah. It's... everybody is very busy.
And then, remind me on our bidding process now, because it's changed a little bit. So you really don't give any amount anymore of what you think it's going to be. I think there were times where we had...
Correct. Our budget was not ever listed.
This was... that's why they came up with theirs, and then you were able to talk them down. You even got them lower than what you were estimating for.
Right. We... value engineering, tried to get, you know, just as inexpensive as we can and get as much value out as we could.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wink?
Thank you. What portion of the $50,000 allocated to public art might be allocated to the Cultural Arts Commission, or how, in what way, is that meant to be shared with that group?
No, that's not a part of this contract.
No?
No. That will come later in the Broadway Improvements is when we'll spend that money.
Okay, thank you. And I have one more question. Does the project in any way modify any of the trees along the 3,300 and 3,400 block?
No, it does not.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Berantine?
The pedestrian lighting on here says it's the Hess America estimate. We just all got done... I forgot the names of the two lights that got put up. Is that already included in this?
The budget numbers that are in the back of the communication does have that Hess America light in there, because it's the more expensive light, so we wanted to make sure that we had funding for everything.
I voted, and I encouraged people to vote, but I forget which one was which name.
The classic...
Oh, the cla... okay, and the other... okay. Just forget which one was which.
Yeah, it was an overwhelming...
Because all I had to do was check a box.
Yeah, so I hope you all got to vote, you know, at least once, so.
Yes, no, I only voted...
Yeah, once. Vote often.
There were a lot of people very interested in that, and I'm very grateful that you did that process.
It was nice to hear.
Because I actually changed my mind from the pictures that we had seen originally, and I'm grateful that you gave them the opportunity, since there was some controversy with the businesses down there, to go ahead and see them in action and what they look like and how they would affect it. It made a huge difference in the choice, so thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. I know one of the things that I heard about that light was it was way too bright, shined in people's eyes, but that can be controlled by the size of the wattage of the bulbs, correct?
And we'll see if they can be dimmed.
Okay, okay.
Well, didn't the vote matter?
No, I wasn't changing the vote. I was just asking that question. The next question that I have, is the entire project being funded from the Public Improvement Fund, or just what we're doing right now, the electrical infrastructure improvements?
The electrical infrastructure improvements are funded by the South Broadway Improvements Project in the PIF. You know, there's been some other money transferred in there from the Urban Renewal Authority, so we're using that money as well.
Okay, and then, I see it's like $206,000. Is the remaining $300,000 still available from the other funds for the other things we'll need to do after the lighting is done?
Some of the other funds will have to transfer into the PIF, and we'll probably be back before you to authorize that at a later date.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve 11C1.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show, six ayes.
Thank you very much. Our next agenda item is 11C2, Agreement with the Greenway Foundation. Staff recommends that City Council approve by motion an agreement with the Greenway Foundation for the purchase of 10 acre feet of water through the Chatfield Environmental Pool. Our staff source is City Manager Eric Keck.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This particular item was discussed in 2017, and the original genesis of this particular idea has been around, actually, for a long time. As many of you may be aware, the Army Corps of Engineers is currently examining the implementation of an increased pool size in the Chatfield Reservoir itself. Along with that, the Greenway Foundation has been working with several private entities, larger water purveyors like Denver Water, as well as the South Platte Working Group, to encourage and challenge those cities that might be impacted along the South Platte River to participate in the acquisition of water shares that ultimately could be utilized to create what is now being called the Chatfield Environmental Pool. The CEP, as we'll call it, is primarily in place for days like today. Very dry, we have low flow on the river, and it's meant to do two things. Number one, to improve the water quality within the South Platte River, and as a offshoot of that, secondarily, it is encouraging wildlife and biota, the habitat that are in the river, as well as around the river, to thrive as well in those low-flow conditions. As many of you are aware, water rights in Colorado are used to their full consumption. So in other words, as soon as municipal use is done, industrial use is done, some other user on the other end has right to that water, such as agricultural uses. And as you've probably heard or recall from several presentations done by our wastewater plant director, John Kuzman, water is very important and is used several times throughout this particular reach of the South Platte River. So tonight, we've moved... are bringing forward an agreement with the Greenway Foundation, which is the entity that is aggregating all of the entities that desire to purchase acre feet of water, these shares, to ultimately create a 2,100-acre-foot Chatfield Environmental Pool. And so, as part of our discussion last year, we were challenged to come forward and similarly to Littleton, acquire 10 acre feet of water at $7,500 an acre foot. So the council at that time, last year in 2017, said, yes, we are interested. Please bring forward at the appropriate time an agreement to acquire these water shares, acquire this additional water. So we are doing so. What does this mean for Inglewood? The fact of the matter is, we will not have the ability to consume this water. However, when low-flow conditions transpire, the group itself, which is governed by the Colorado Water Conservation Board, will decide when to release water into the South Platte River to increase our water quality. And as you're very aware, and astutely aware, at several times of the year, when we have low-flow conditions in the river, as well as the Big Dry Creek, a couple of things happen. Specifically, in the hot summer months, we have algae blooms. And algae blooms have an adverse impact on the water quality that we consume each day, as our particular water treatment facility does not use reverse osmosis, which removes everything from the water like Denver does. But we have TSO issues, TNO issues, with water from time to time. Through the Chatfield Environmental Pool, as well as the Big Dry Creek Diversion Project, which you have already supported and is underway, between those two, it is believed that the water quality that we will be taking in at the Union Avenue Water Intake will be vastly improved. And so our residents ultimately will benefit from having the additional water within the South Platte River and this particular reach of the river. It's called Reach 14, for those who are wondering what this reach is called. So again, it's going to improve our water quality. The financial implications for the City of Inglewood are $75,000. This money has been budgeted in the fiscal year 2018 budget within the water operational budget itself, as you can see. And specifically, as you can see from my council memorandum, it's the Water Utilities Professional Services account. And we've budgeted a total of $400,000 in there, and that accommodates a number of things, including residual removal, which will again transpire this year. But again, there's adequate funding in this particular line item to accommodate this $75,000 acquisition. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have on the Chatfield Environmental Pool, as well as the agreement with the Greenway Foundation.
Thank you. Mr... or Councilmember Questa?
Thank you. This is a one-time $75,000 buy-in of the 10 acre feet, then this won't be an annual purchase or recurring purchase?
That's correct. Yes, one time. So essentially, what has gone on is CWCB, which is the Colorado Water Conservation Board, has found the most senior water rights that are available. I think you might have heard Director Brennan in the past talk about how several agricultural users have given up their consumptive right to a water right. And so, these water rights have been purchased, are being aggregated, spoken for, and then we're helping to purchase that through our $75,000 contribution. In the future, the maintenance of that environmental pool will be done through this Colorado Water Conservation Board, as well as the governing body that includes the Central Colorado Water Users Association. And so, they're going to take care of that piece. But you're correct, councillor, this is a one-time acquisition.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protam.
Thank you. Any more questions? Councilmember Berantine?
The additional storage space that they have, isn't that coming from them changing Chatfield?
Correct.
So they have additional storage space because they're changing Chatfield, and we all know that, you know, they put the benches underwater and the outhouse places, you know, where you would go, and all of that went underwater. So now it's a larger storage. And that storage isn't going to go away. I mean, that additional storage space doesn't leave. So I'm not quite understanding why this is just a one-time thing, because what this is kind of buying into some of the infrastructure that's creating the additional storage space. Storage space isn't going to go away after a year. It's going to always be more storage space. So why are we only... I mean, if we really don't have any control over the release of the water, and we really don't have any control over the extra capacity of the water, we just believe along the platte that having the extra capacity there and kind of paying for this infrastructure to go ahead and redo the amenities and get that, you know, the infrastructure so that we have the additional capacity, then why isn't it a little bit more... I guess, why didn't they just come for the money and go, we want the infrastructure, we're going to have bigger capacity, and then say every year it's going to benefit the river, and here's how we're going to manage it, so that we could have a little bit more eye on the future, on how we were going to do this, whether we were going to participate in the board, how we were going to handle this, instead of this kind of purchasing idea?
Well, allow me to clarify. So the Army Corps of Engineers is, or we all are, because our taxes go to the Army Corps of Engineers, is paying for the infrastructure itself. What is actually transpiring here is that all the entities, I think I provided you with a couple of frequently asked questions pieces in this particular document as well, that indicate all the individual players who are involved. So the actual funding that we will be buying these water shares with, or this $75,000, you know, 7,500 acre feet, 10 acre feet, we're paying for the water right. We're paying for that water, that acre feet of water. We're not paying for the infrastructure that's going to maintain it. You're correct. As you look at Chatfield, not last year perhaps, maybe the year before, where there was significant flooding, the lowlands, as well as the restrooms, were consumed by that additional runoff and additional rains that came. There, the Corps of Engineers is reworking that so that you will not have that flooding. But there are also going to be areas of Chatfield, if you were to go out there in the near future, that you won't be able to utilize anymore because they're increasing the pool.
Right.
And they're going to protect that water so it doesn't become stagnant as it has in the past and becomes a mosquito breeding ground. So this is more, again, we're not paying for the infrastructure, we're paying for the water itself. And that water, that 10 acre feet, will again be allowed to be utilized to create that 2,100-acre-foot pool on an annual basis that could, that can and will be released.
And what you just said is what I was asking. You said it will be created on an annual basis.
Correct.
So why are we acting like this is just a one-time thing of one purchase of a certain amount of water, instead of that it's some kind of more ongoing deal where we could have some control over it?
I understand your question more clearly now. So essentially, what we're doing is we're buying a water share that will be added to create this 2,100-acre-feet pool. And so, that, you're right, it will continue to go forth each year, but our cost is only to buy that share, those 10 acre feet, one time. We don't have to buy that 10 acre feet each year.
And then, not to be chintzy or cheap or anything, but once they release the water, it's... we're going to get it. I mean, we're going to benefit from it. So what is the incentive for all of the players to be in this, and how many other players are there?
Yeah, there are lots of players, and so it's...
Well, is it everybody? Because I don't want anybody getting a free ride off our water.
Even Sheridan's buying water, okay? I shouldn't say that. That was bad. But they're buying water rights as well. And so, Denver Water, obviously, is the biggest user. They're buying 500 acre feet. There's even private nonprofits such as the Trout, you know, the Trout Foundation, they're buying water as well. So there's a number of organizations, but I can tell you that from C470 all the way into Denver, there are all the entities that butt the river are buying water, as well as, again, private residents are even involved in this particular acquisition. And so, it's a significant number of people, and even some people that don't even live close to this, close to the South Platte River, who just are concerned with ensuring that not only do we have adequate flows for the riverine and the river environment, but also for aesthetic flows. Denver, obviously, appreciates aesthetic flows for Confluence Park and things like that. And so, there's a lot of entities that are involved.
I appreciate you putting the information together. I was very... I was forebringing this forward in the first place, but I do appreciate the extra information because it did raise some questions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm done.
Actually, I do have a couple of questions. Do we have an updated list? I mean, the list that we were given was the donors as of over a year ago.
Yes.
And the truth is, it wasn't complete. Is Arapahoe County buying into this?
They are.
I've heard they've had a lot of money that they could spend.
Yes, they did buy a significant amount of water shares. Essentially, what happened was the South Platte Working Group, as they met, again, we kind of kicked around some figures, which in 2017, we approached you as the seated council at the time and said, hey, we've been asked to do 10 acre feet. Littleton's doing 10 acre feet. Sheridan, at the time, was going to do more, but I think they've reduced to, you know, an acre foot itself, one acre foot. South Suburban Parks and Recreation bought water as well. But you're correct, Arapahoe County did step up, and I believe they bought 25 acre feet, are buying 25 acre feet of water. I can obtain for you an updated listing. I'd have to reach out to the Greenway Foundation to get that for you, but...
Okay, all right.
Happy to do that.
That would be great. And in my reading, when I read it this time, that first question on what the financial contribution pays for, it seemed to me that we are paying for the infrastructure. We are paying to move the amenities in Chatfield Reservoir so that when the water level goes up, the amenities will still be there, and the water rights really will belong to the Central Colorado Water Conservancy District, which will be taken out of the river at Brighton.
Yes, that's correct, for agricultural uses. And again, that just shows the nature of how many times water turns over. They ultimately have that consumptive right at that point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Comments, Councilmember Olson?
I am just really thrilled to see this come forward. I think it's the right thing to do for several reasons. It really anticipates together as a broader regional kind of set of communities what our issues could be going forward, and it shows the commitment of everyone to contribute. We ourselves were not following the Colorado Water Conservation Plan, if you remember that several years ago. We decided to put ourselves a little bit more under the accountability of that, and so this is part of that, and we ought to be supporting it. I also think it's the right thing to do, thinking about our neighbors and how we respond to each other's needs. And then, of course, finally, it does really contribute to our own interests and for the taste, as well as a number of other things. It's the right thing to be doing. And it's not that much, actually, for the amount of people that have entered into this is really, really quite... not alarming. It's exciting to see the Walton family giving, a number of others. So it's a great way to see how people can pull together and do something around water.
All right. Thank you so much. Any other comments? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show, six ayes.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 11C3, Award Police Headquarters Materials Testing and Special Inspection Services. Staff recommends that City Council award by motion a contract with ground engineering for materials testing and special inspection services in support of the construction at the Inglewood Police Headquarters building site in the amount of $68,218. Our staff source is interim Public Works Director Larry Newell.
Good evening, Mayor Russell, Council.
Good evening.
I'm here tonight to present a motion to award the contract for ground engineering services for both materials and special inspections, because they do a lot of the rebar inspections, things like that. Our construction manager, CBRE, went through the formal process to obtain proposals from five firms guided by the procurement rules of the City of Inglewood. They evaluated the proposals. In your packet, you'll see the... the materials bid levelling document. That was the evaluation. It not only provided us scores, but also provided us pricing at a cost per unit for a time they have to come out and test. Once they completed it, they brought it to Public Works and Engineering. We sat down, met with them, talked about what, a couple of things we saw. In the end, we kind of all agreed that we were comfortable with ground engineering. One clarification I want you to note is that in that bid levelling document, you see a price of $58,000. That was for the 50% design drawing at that point. That's when we asked for the request of the proposals. Since then, we've completed, went to 100% construction documents. We asked them to update the proposal for that. And that's why we're requesting the $68,000. Ground is a highly qualified testing firm, been around for 33 years, done a number of projects. They're currently on the City of Inglewood school project, Jefferson County Jail, City of Aurora Safety Training Center, and of course, they did the work here at City Center when we built it. So, tonight's will authorize the materials testing and special inspection services for both Phase 1 and Phase 2 at the price of $68,218.
Okay.
I'm open for any questions.
Any questions? I do have one question. Are we still, the $68,000, does that still keep us under budget? I mean, we're like at $26,900 and some thousand.
Yeah. The original budget estimate was around $200,000 for this item. So, yeah, we're well under budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Understand that this, if we need more testing, things like that, this contract, one of the things you always want with your materials testers, you want them representing you as the owner.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Councilmember Questa?
Thank you, Mayor Protam, and thank you, Mr. Nemo. My question is regarding the line item. I believe it's on page 56. It's near the end of the packet. And it is line item 18, material testing inspections, and it does show that current value that was stated in the proposal, $155,218. But I'm seeing that that budget in the corner was generated September 26, 2017. Is that number reflected there, $155,000, still correct? That's what currently sits in that fund?
That's the material. I don't have a copy of that in my packet.
Here. I think that's what you're looking for.
Oh, I knew what you were looking for. This one?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. I believe so. And in the corner, you'll see the September 26, 2017 date?
Yes.
So, again, it's line item 18, reflecting the $155,000 that we're pulling these funds from. Is that still the current balance in that fund, the 155, or has that gone, has that been reduced at all since September 26, when this was printed?
No, that doesn't, yeah, it does not have this award in it. That will, they started at $200,000. They've reallocated $45,000 out of this budget. The 155 is what we'll pull the $68,000 from.
Okay. And that is the current number today. There's $155,000 in there. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? I would entertain a motion. Oh, I do, I have one other comment. This is just a logistical thing. On the first page of the professional services agreement, it says January 2017.
Page on that?
It's the very first page of the professional services agreement.
It's after the summary.
Yeah, it's right after the summary.
You're not talking about CBRE. Okay.
No. It says the 17th day of January 2017. It should be 2018.
It should be 2018.
So...
Councilmember Olson?
Actually, have, so that's the day that they did it, right? I mean, 2018, right? January 17? Is that what you meant?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Because when I first read the 17, I missed the 2017. But I thought, wait, I got really confused about what day today was, what we were approving. Then I realized, okay, this is the actual agreement that you began on that date.
Yeah, it's the beginning of the year. You always miss those.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve item 11C3.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes being cast. Let the record show, six ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we're going to general discussion. We will cancel the executive session this evening because the city attorney is very sick. I believe she has the flu. And so we will reschedule that for the next council meeting. So, there were a couple of things, and we can go ahead to councilmember's choice. I really would like to talk about the line item budget first, before we talk about council travel to National League of Cities. And part of the reason is, I have suggested, I don't know if all of you have heard this, that we would use the NLC travel expenses to underwrite the cost of the special election. And so, I'd just like some feedback on that. There, on the line item budget, there's $17,000 slated for travel expenses to NLC. And I believe the estimate is still around $9,000 for the special election, or has it gone up from that?
Well, I guess now's a good time to give an update. Unfortunately, we received a call late this afternoon from Arapahoe County, who does not feel comfortable being able to coordinate this election, a special election with us due to the upcoming primary. So, that dramatically changes and impacts how we move forward. If we go to special election, we would need to run it on our own, or potentially pair it with the upcoming primary, which is at the end of June. And so, this all just transpired late this afternoon. I've been on the phone all afternoon with Arapahoe County, just trying to figure out where we're at, what that puts us for deadlines, and certainly, that will dramatically change and impact the cost.
If we partner with them for the, with the primary, what is the cost going to look like?
They don't have those numbers for me, but, I mean, that's probably going to be the cheapest route for us, because it's an election that they're already running. There is a couple things that they have to double-check. They have a meeting with the Secretary of State tomorrow, so they are just making sure on a couple items that we can do this. So I wanted to make sure that that's a potential, but that certainly would be the most cost-effective way, because we would be able to coordinate with them. But then, that certainly pushes out swearing in a new councilmember until the beginning of July.
Okay. Councilmember Barrantyne?
For the question that we have at hand, obviously, that's a surprise to everybody, including apparently our city clerk. And so, rather than get our, be speculative and with information that we don't know, or ask you to answer questions that you don't have an answer to yet, especially since apparently the county clerk has to meet with the Secretary of State tomorrow, I guess the question at hand here was talking about having the money for the election and using the money from National League of Cities to do that, which I guess some numbers got put together, and it's about $3,000 a pop for a person. I have not ever attended. I think that, I think the money is better spent here and at home. I appreciate the people that have gone in the past. We may want to talk about changing that up a little, so that if we spend that kind of money to go ahead and have people travel, that they, we have a specific purpose for going out there and an idea of what we want to accomplish prior to going out there. But I think the money would be better spent, and especially given what our city clerk has just said. I think that we need to keep as much of that budget open as possible and at least commit that we would have that money so that no department in this city is asked to give up anything for this election, if we could go ahead and pony up that money and have it available. And that's probably more important now, given what you've said, to at least have that pool of money available to take care of this.
Councilmember Olson?
Thank you. I have a point of order, maybe, at this point to ask. Are we talking about both of these items at once now?
Let's just talk about...
Is that okay?
Well, let's just talk, let's talk about the one first, about the funding. The other thing is, obviously, just hit all of us at the same time.
Right.
So, let's put that on hold. We're going to have to pay for this election one way or the other. So, let's talk about that first, and then we are going to talk about that other.
I don't know which one you're talking about now. Are you talking about B2 or B1? Which one are we now on?
Well...
You conflated them both.
I'm unclear. Okay. B, actually, I'm talking about B2.
Okay.
The fiscal year 2018 budget.
And so, now the question is whether we...
Would use that...
Would use what?
The NLC travel expenses to pay for the special election.
Oh, I'm absolutely fine with that. I, so, but I also wondered how many people had asked to go to NLC. I'm not interested in going this year. I, last year was the least helpful, but I think I sent you all my report from it. And I do believe that we ought to be being way more conscious about what we do when we go there, and I think we should be there. I think we should be in the game, but we have to do some work before we go.
Okay. I appreciate that. And at this point, one councilmember has requested permission to go, and that is the...
That's why there's one in the first one.
That's, yeah, yes.
Yeah. I'm absolutely fine with figuring out a way to utilize it for a number of these things that we've been going to.
Okay.
Utilizing towards the election.
Okay.
Ways that we can pull money out of other pieces here.
Okay. And I will call on them in just a second. I do have one other thing that I do believe that at this point, if the original election would have gone on, that we would have like four months of mayor's salary that hasn't been paid. That is also in this budget. Is that in the line item budget? Is that available or no?
It is. Actually, you should be receiving that pay as the interim or the acting mayor.
She's getting paid twice. She's not getting paid double. So what is the difference?
Let me clarify that.
Is it $15 a month or something?
She's getting paid once as mayor, but the mayor obviously does receive more than the regular councilperson. And in 2015, the council at that time voted to give an increase in wage for that. I can dig that up. I think you're probably, you're right, you're going to have three or four months of that, which is probably going to be, what, $3,200? I think it's $800 a month?
I think it's 900.
Is it 900?
I think it's 900.
Okay. So $3,600. So that gives you $3,600 of money.
In addition. So, okay, that's, all right. Thank you. Councilmember Questa?
I just want to express support for discontinuing the travel for NLC to cover the election expenses.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you. I am also supportive of using that budget to pay for the special election. However, I want to make sure that any, especially any councilmembers want to go, that they are able to go. I went once last year, and it was, it was interesting, and I learned a lot. However, I think, I learned more from CML than NLC, but I think, like Councilmember Olson mentioned, it is important that we are there. And I think if any members of council would like to go, they should have the opportunity to do so.
Okay. And we will talk about that. Councilmember Barrantyne?
Well, I think in all fairness, that the issue of going came up before we knew we were going to have an election or not. So I don't, you know, I don't think it's an either or necessarily. So I kind of feel bad that any councilmember would be put into an odd position. So, I agree with Councilmember Martinez. If somebody wanted to go, that's, I understand that they would have signed up not knowing that this expense was coming up and how much we want to commit to no department having any kind of hit as a result of what's happened. It ought to come out of the judge's pay, in my opinion, but... He's got some, okay, he's the one that created this whole situation as well. But we do have some ownership in that. And while we're trying to eke pennies out of adding up that a councilmember who doesn't get paid for four months, you know, we're trying to put this together so that nobody in the city, no department, no service, takes any hit as a result of this election. And we obviously have some, some things up in the air about everything going on, so I would support.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
Thank you. I wanted to make sure that when we make this decision that we're talking about just this year and now, I would not want to bind any future councils to that we're not doing NLC anymore. I do think it's a really, it can be helpful. I think one of the reasons why it wasn't as helpful last year was because we had a changeover administration, doesn't matter who won or not. It was just, they were less used to putting this together. So the kinds of visits that we would have had on the Hill were not quite as organized. And then, there was a snowstorm, and some of those meetings got canceled. So that's why it was not very useful to me. I went anyway on the Hill, you know, it was much to do about nothing for snow that day. But I just, there are some, some issues I think we could do better at with that. So I just want to make sure we're not setting this stone for the future, and that's really clear.
No, and I was just suggesting this year, this time, because we have this special situation that hopefully won't happen.
The reason why I was bringing it up, because it has been on other, it's been made, people have made comments about it, that maybe we shouldn't be doing any training, and I would like to have that conversation separately.
No, no. And I also would like to say that even if we forego NLC this year, I would like to make sure that every councilmember has an opportunity to go to CML this year. But I'm not saying that we get rid of CML, or NLC totally, just this year. Councilmember Questa?
I, I would agree that this should be a year for, or a decision for just this year on NLC, but I also don't think that should mean we're necessarily just going next year. I think that we should justify what we're getting, or what the taxpayer's getting for $3,000 a councilmember, some sort of tangible results that they get out of that. It seems like a high price to me. So I would hope next year, if we decide to revisit the subject and do decide to send somebody, that we can document some results that would come for that at $3,000 a councilperson.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have to vote on it?
I...
Yes.
Yeah, yes. Do we, Councilmember Olson?
So I guess I'm asking, are we going to, are we voting this first one, and then it just precludes that no one can travel? Or are we going to let one person?
No, let's...
It's 3,000. It's only...
Right.
It's only one person wants to go.
Right. Okay.
I would prefer to let them go with some very specific ideas of what they could do there. And then, I mean, 3,000, it could probably help that much one way or the other. I don't know. What, do you have any idea how much it might cost if we do it on our own, or you don't want to quote anything? Okay.
I'm sorry. I'm just still trying to get a lot of information.
Sure. Okay. I totally appreciate that. This drew you off, and all of us.
Mayor, I want to point out as well, that that travel budget, you say it's NLC, but it's really NLC and CML. So, keep in mind that last year was about $1,000 a councilperson to attend CML.
Okay.
So, that gives you a rough figure. So if there's six of you that are going to go, or hopefully seven, if you get a seventh person here, well, you might, depending on the timeframe.
Right.
It'd be $7,000.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Councilmember Questa?
So if I'm understanding correctly, the travel budget is 17. If we do send a member to NLC, we're down to 14. And we don't know that this election couldn't cost $14,000 by itself, that it could not exceed that. We were originally at 15 when we started this discussion. So I just don't know that if we still send somebody, that we've got the election covered, unless there's other sources we're going to start tapping into. And I think there's other places council could tighten the belt just for this body, without impacting any of the services or departments offered by the city. But to me, do we even know that 17,000, our full travel budget, covers the election at this point in time? I don't believe that's the case.
Um...
Not to mention CML. If we throw CML to the...
Right. So, let me, Mr. Keck, if we, if, let's say it does cost $17,000, obviously, if we wouldn't have come up with the suggestion, the city would have had to come up with whatever it cost for the special election anyway. So, I want, I would like to personally underwrite as much as we possibly can, but there would be some other resources.
Yes. I mean, we'd obviously have to find that funding for you, aside from coming forth and asking for a special appropriation out of the undesigned fund balance. I know you want to avoid that, which we all would. So, you have other line items here that you could take funding from. You have technical training at $1,500. You also appropriated, I believe, all but $2,000 for council-approved aids. So you have $2,000 there. I believe, all but $2,000 for council-approved aides. So, you have $2,000 there. So, there's- there's enough that would start to add up within just the council's budget, so you wouldn't have to look at another departmental budget, as has been enunciated this evening, to help find that difference. But I think your- the city clerk is right. We just don't know what that number is. I mean, if we were to do our own, I'm afraid we'd have to hire some expertise, and that might be-
More expertise.
Yeah, more.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Councilmember Barrantyne?
I appreciate that, City Manager, that we have other line items. I have not, in the two years that I've been on this council, spent a dime of the $600, whatever dollars that I'm supposed to. I take somebody to coffee, I spend my own money. I haven't- I mean, there's other monies in the council budget that can be- that can be looked at so that CML can at least be done. So, rather than just have the speculation of this, I would prefer to just do a motion that we take our National League of Cities money and- or the travel budget, and make that available so that we have some monies for this election.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Wink?
Is there a second to the motion?
Okay. Is it- yeah.
I've made a motion to use the money as you've- as you've put forward-
Okay. Is there a second?
For the selection.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Wink?
It's been moved and seconded to take the travel expenses to use for the special election. Is there any discussion on that? Councilmember Questa?
Form on clarification, that's the full $17,000, or that's the $3,000 that was dedicated to NLC?
Whatever- whatever money we need-
Up to 17.
And actually, we're- we are going to discuss the one person that would like to go, because if the person-
Okay. It was- it was never my intent to try and out somebody, either, if that isn't what they want us to do, but go ahead.
So-
I guess my question remains. So, we're talking the full $17,000, then, is what we're voting on right now, or up to-
That's what my motion is for.
Thank you.
The entire budget. Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. That's the motion. Okay. Any other discussion? Councilmember Martinez?
Can we make it more general, so that it's not just specifically this travel budget? Like, has been discussed, if we need to take from additional items, then we also can have that. Or do you think that would- your language covers that?
Nope. That's what my motion is for, is for this travel budget. I think that's the most straightforward way to do this.
Okay. Councilmember Wink?
Oh, did I?
No, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
To not be labor, the point. So, at this point, we are saying that we won't investigate those other line items under council's budget, where we may also find additional funding. Are we saying we are not going to investigate those, that we are only going to rely on NLC to help buffer the costs of the election?
At this point, I think the NLC, the reason I'm saying it's kind of focusing on NLC with the travel, is because that happens first. And we are willing to forego NLC and then try to see if we have- depending on how much the election is, try to see if there is some other funding available, if at all, for CML, depending on how much we end up paying for the election. But that we're willing to forego NLC at this point.
But that that's not the only source that we're considering for- to help buffer our costs?
For right now, that's what my motion is, is the travel budget for this council. That's my- that's my motion for right now. The election could cost a lot more, and we'll have to come up with the money somewhere else. And maybe nobody would go to CML. Maybe we won't buy socks and shoes this. I don't know. We don't know how much it's gonna be. But at least, for my motion, it's just that that $17,000, we're willing to commit as a council, so that they know that they've got something to pay for, for this election.
Thank you. Councilmember Questa?
Yeah, well, so we- if this passes, we've got 17 we can put towards the election. If it starts to go north of that, man, my buyer's remorse might kick in at a certain point. But to Councilmember Wink's voice, I'm happy to keep cutting. I think there's more things that we can cut out of council's budget, for sure. So, if we need to go north of 17, then I still think council is accountable for that, and it should come out of our funds.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
I would- if the motion is not gonna be amended to include other sources, I will not be supporting it at this time. I think we can commit to taking it out of our budget, wherever it is. So, I would, if it's just the travel right now, I will not be supporting it. I prefer it much more general.
Councilmember Olson?
I have a couple of information questions. When does NLC need to be determined by, and has it already- have we already-
Probably tonight, right?
Tonight, because your council policy-
It doesn't give us enough time.
... requires 30 days' approval in advance of a member's travel. And so, you're not gonna have another meeting before that, so that would be tonight.
So, and so, if that one's done, it's only $3,000. It still doesn't give us enough to do what we might expect. Are we- are we at a point where we could go through by line item and know tonight, even, what else we might not spend in any of these, so we could have a ballpark, and then make a decision that we have, you know, looks like we could come up with $30,000 tonight? And so, does it really matter if someone goes to NLC or not? I think that would be the question.
It's completely up to you, counselor.
No, I think it's up to whether you all think you can give us any idea.
I can look at this right now and identify another $20,000, but-
Okay.
You're gonna have to be willing to tighten that belt to do that.
Okay. I would love to go through and just go line by line and say, what else- are we willing to give up something here or not? Like, I'm very willing. I've never spent either the- I don't know if that's included in the salaries and wages, but I've never used the whatever $50 a month for the last eight, nine years. So, that would be an automatic. I bet- I bet a lot of us are probably gonna do that, so that would be a chunk of money. I'm willing not to go to CML this year. That would be a big change, but that'd be fine, too. So, I'm willing to go through and figure out what else we have, and then get the rest of the information this week on what really is going to-
On order, there's a motion on the table right now.
Okay.
And Councilmember Olson, your point previously about making sure that National League of Cities, for that kind of expense, is a little bit more thoughtful on exactly what somebody expects to go and do there and get out of it. And I think that's a process that we really need to investigate as a council. And I know it's hard, if somebody wants to go, that is- to say no. But we are in a very unique position, and council terms are for four years. And so, we really need to make sure that we're cognizant of the situation we're currently in, give the staff some peace of mind. And then, we may need to look at the line item for the additional money that it may cost. But I think, just to show a faith, that we are willing to give something up, to go ahead and move this forward, so that they can start functioning and getting this planned. But to go through this tonight, I'm not prepared to go through every single line item of the council budget to try and eke out money, just so that one person- and I think that that's kind of- I mean, I was hoping that we would show some solidarity in going forward with getting this moving. I mean, sometimes the answer's no, and you can't always do what you- what you want. I mean, we have four more years. You're right, we're not talking about getting rid of NLC altogether. But we're talking about trying to move as fast as we can to get this election funded. Know that we're gonna make the belt tightening, and that we're gonna do the sacrificing on this council, and not expect staff or any other department to. So, I think it's at least a start. It may not be even close to what it ends up costing. Anywhere between $15,000 and $30,000, we may need to go through some other line item. But I'd like to give them a start.
Thank you. Councilmember Wink?
Oh, sorry. I have another.
Okay. So, we have a motion on the floor to use the travel expenses, the $17,000 towards the special election. Is there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes been cast. Let the record show, five ayes and one nay, the one nay being Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you. Now, there is- Councilmember Olson?
So, I would like to go back to the idea that Councilmember Questa brought up of going through, and Councilmember Wink, of going through this tonight to get some- some reading, because it's gonna happen pretty quick. What are some things we're willing to put aside besides the travel? I think we can do that tonight. I think there's some pretty obvious ones. The first one would be whether we all would be willing to, in solidarity, not use the $50 a month that we're allotted, and go through a bit more of these, and just start to see what we have, so that we know where we're going.
Okay. That is- I appreciate that. Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify, again, why I voted no on that, is because I want it to be more general, and I think we do, we can definitely go through line by line. I'm more than willing not to use my allotted budget. I never use it. I think there's also- we also could use the food budget. Maybe there's some printing we can use the budget for. I think there's a lot of other things in here that we could use that funding for the special election.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Questa?
I would agree. I think discretionary fund should go first. We could probably cut out food. I'm not sure where clothing comes in. I would imagine we have several areas here. But if you guys want to dig into that tonight, I'm happy to do so, because I'm sure that we can get 17 much higher pretty quickly.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Wink?
Thank you. I- what I wanted to say earlier was, indeed, that I'm okay cutting our councilmember dinner budget. That's a good chunk. The discretionary fund as well, I'm happy to forego. And I wondered myself, Member Questa, what the clothing was, that line item was for.
I did get a plan.
I had lots of wild ideas, but I won't mention them.
There's hats and t-shirts.
Those are three- I mean, we haven't all spoken yet, but those are three reasonable areas where-
You don't need to give your pen back.
We seem willing to move. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Barrantyne?
I think we need to have a thoughtful process for why those things are on the budget. We gave them the $17,000 to start, and this isn't- some of that money is used to do outreach for citizens, and we also talked about CML. So, let's make sure that we gave them money to go ahead and move forward. This isn't a contest on how astir we can come this second, because then we'll find out. I mean, a few minutes ago, we were arguing about $3,000 for somebody to go, and how important that is. And now, we want to gut the entire budget. We want to be very careful about how we handle that. I think we need to have a little bit of thought process. One would be, let's find out how much it's actually gonna cost first, instead of trying to rush through everything tonight. We gave them something so that they could go ahead and move forward. There was anywhere between $9,000 and $15,000. Let's go ahead and make sure we find out what's going on first.
Okay. Thank you.
And no, I am not interested. I do- I'm not prepared to sit here and go through at 9:00 at night, all of a sudden, going through the line item budget for the council.
Okay. I appreciate that. I actually, I do- I thought we were gonna be done early tonight. But I do appreciate what you said. Councilmember Olson?
Yes, I was bringing it back up, because I heard at least three people, if not four, say they wanted to go through it. So, if one person, you know, says one thing, and there are several that don't, I think we should talk about, do you want to do it tonight or not? I think it's helpful to know there's more there, and it gives the city staff some idea of what's a ballpark we're looking for. And I'm only looking for a ballpark. At least, we know there are some here that are very easy, just like the NLC thing, to come up with tonight. And I don't know what advertising is about for us.
Right.
Are we advertising council? We will have to for this election.
Right. So, um, okay. Thank you. Councilmember Questa?
I'm going to pass for now. Thank you, Mayor Protam.
Okay. I do believe there is other money in here. I do believe we- it is getting late, and I think there's a couple other things we need to talk about on the agenda. I don't ever use my discretionary fund. If I take people to coffee, I pay for it myself. I think that there's probably some places that we can find money here. And as I said, there is $3,600, or there will be $3,600, that was not paid out to the mayor's salary, because we've been short a councilmember, and short the mayor also. So, I would like to forego that. I- Actually, I want to go ahead with- with councilmember's choice. I have one other thing under mayor's choice that I would like to talk about. And goal-setting ideas is one of those.
Point of information here, I think.
Okay.
Mayor Protam. And so, the city council travel, do we have to make a decision on that, then, or does the one, we just decided, preclude that and make it not- I mean, we need to address that we're not going to vote on that, or something?
Now-
And B one.
Say that again, because I-
So, we still have the city council travel thing that was on here?
Right.
Your city- so, do we have to do anything with that formally, or is that just gone, because we've gone ahead and made that other decision? Just asking for a point of-
I think we can apparently-
Does it matter?
Well, if we- if we decided to spend the full $17,000 for this special election, there probably is no money in the travel budget for NLC.
Obviously. I'm just asking a technicality only here. Is- should we say something under B one, or do we not have to worry about it, because it's under councilmember's choice? That's what I'm asking for.
If it's under councilmember's choice, there's no- there's no requirement-
No resolution. Okay. Great. That's all I needed to know.
Okay. Thank you. The other thing I wanted to talk about was goal-setting ideas. I believe I sent an email to all of you. And so, if there are any questions or comments, that's- Councilmember Martinez?
I have a question slash comment. I know we have on our studies- upcoming study session to talk about the council's kind of strategic plan that our assistant city manager is working on. So, I would like us to do our goal-setting session, after we've had a chance to be presented that information and digest everything, and then- so, have it separate from the goal-setting session. So, have the strategic plan presentation first, and then, maybe a week or so later, do the goal-setting session.
I think that, on the tentative schedule, they're both scheduled for the same night. They probably will kind of dovetail together. I think that they will dovetail a lot. So, I don't know if that-
For me, it would be helpful to digest that information, because I don't know what, obviously, what the other councilmembers said that's gonna be in that. So, it might influence some of my goals, or help me think differently about some goals that I may have.
Okay. Let's have some more discussion now, and perhaps, we'll see. Councilmember Olson?
Yeah. I hadn't thought about that. That would be an interesting way to go at it, and it would be useful to know some of the updates. I guess I wanted to ask City Manager Keck, do you see that prolonging things in a way that isn't helpful to your staff? Because mostly, you want to know what we're really focusing on. I don't want to slow down what you're trying to do, either.
I appreciate that question, and I think the mayor is correct, that on the 26th of February, you do have, first and foremost, the council strategy session. That'll be your first session, that Mr. Wolf will be performing a summary of all the comments from the one-on-one meetings that he has conducted. And then, right after that, was the council goals and priorities. The issue that we're feeling the time crunch on, and we don't want to have happen again this particular year, is ensuring that we're able to fill your time in a meaningful way that will help you to achieve not only the creation of the fiscal year 19 budget, but beyond that, as well as some of the overarching and larger strategies that need to be done. And that, I believe, is the piece that Mayor Russell's been trying to push, is we need to make sure that we get those items addressed as well, so that we don't lose our view of the target that we're trying to hit into the future.
So, I guess I'm asking a little bit more pointed question, then. So, you would not- you really do want us to do it all in one night? What I- so, as I'm thinking about it, and I'm thinking, gosh, the feedback that I get might show that you got- that we all don't know each other gave, might start to change the way I'd think about some things.
No, correct. And I think again-
Weeks later, could it be possible to come back?
That's not your first night. That's not your first and only discussion of strategy, for sure. Nor should it be your first and only discussion of priorities. What we're trying to do is, strategy comes first, then your priorities and goals need to come second. So, I think that that- So I think that that process on the 26th is going to really help to open the window and help provide us with a view and some optics into what you're trying to do and accomplish over the next two years.
And if I can interject, I think one thing that's, at least the way I'm seeing things, and it may just be the goals that I have, will help maybe even on the strategic plan in setting priorities. I mean, some of my ideas involve priorities for where we need to spend our money. And just even my conversation with answering the questions that Mr. Wolf shared with us helped me see how the goals that I would like to see move forward fit into that plan about where we're going. I do believe the questions that he asked were very pointed and would also help us to figure out what direction we wanted to go. And it doesn't, this, it doesn't have to be anything really complicated because after we have our first discussion, maybe we want to change some of the goals we have, and that would be perfectly fine.
Council member Olson?
That didn't happen the last time.
Well...
So as long as that's true and we allow each other to morph as we go through this, that'd be great. And I just want to make sure we aren't going to spend six months doing this.
We're not.
I mean...
No.
Because we did last time, maybe a year, it was pitiful. So I would like to get it kind of done in a month and say we're moving forward. But I don't want to be, I mean, it seems weird to not know exactly what we all said first and then say, okay, well, I'm really, I mean, I know what I told you, and I know what I'm willing to set goals for, but maybe there's things that'll change. So I would like to know for sure, is there any way you can send us your summary before we finalize our goals? Do that we send to you?
I certainly can. I'd like to meet with all the members of council first before I send you a summary.
Okay.
So as soon as that, and I believe that'll happen soon, I can send you that summary. It probably won't be too long before the 26th, but as soon as I have some type of summary, I can certainly send that to you.
Okay.
I'll take the time to mention that. One of the big things that I would hope to get out of the 26th is some type of framework that you all are willing to go to the public with. If you remember, a couple months ago, you authorized us to put placeholder, a date, two dates, in our Citizen Magazine here that hopefully you all have copies of. If not, let us know, we've had mailing issues in the past. In that issue, we identified March 7th and March 15th at your consensus to invite the public for a very broad, come tell us what your vision of Anglerwood is. And so I think to be fair, for that to be helpful to you in creating your strategic plan, that has to be a council-led session. And so I hope out of the 26th, we can get some parameters around what that discussion looks like with the public. So I think manager Keck is absolutely right. You want to see where your themes are and see what type of overlap you have, and then beginning, begin to start drilling down into your individual goals and priorities.
Thank you.
So I mention that because if you do want us to advertise a little bit more widely those sessions so that you have members of the public attend, the goal of the 26th hopefully would be to help refine exactly what framework you're bringing to public.
Okay, that's helpful. I'm fine to do it either way. I think there's some logical ways that are more linear that I'm thinking would be helpful to have yours and then, and then within the week, try and turn around some of ours. But I've done goals a million different ways, and it'll come together as long as we don't spend eight, nine months working on it. And you've assured us that we're going to hold you to that.
Yes, thank you. Council member Berentine?
So are we done with that? It's not going to take six months, and we're going to move ahead when we've got the dates? Are we still...
The only thing we were discussing is I actually really would like people to have their, their goal-setting ideas to Mr. Keck by the 12th.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Council member Questa?
And I guess a point of information, is this just anyone else on council member's choice or on this particular subject?
We can go ahead and start council member's choice unless you have...
I do not have any further to add on that subject.
Okay, so you want to start?
You bet. So one of the things that I'm hoping we can add to a study session is the consideration of changing the mayor position from council-selected to citizen-elected. And the way that I see that taking place would be to convert one of the at-large seats to a mayor seat. So the mayor would still be the presiding officer entitled to vote, and he should have no veto power. He shall be recognized as the head of city government for all ceremonial purposes and shall execute and authenticate legal instruments requiring signature of his, or as such official. So really, we would just be removing the at-the-will-of-council part and having council elect, select the mayor. I would like to put this on a study session. I think that it would best be suited that we put it on a ballot, put it before the citizens, see if the citizens would like to elect their mayor as opposed to having council select mayor. And I would like further consideration on that.
Okay, we can talk about that. I don't think it's quite as simple as that happening, but I put it down to put on the study session.
Thank you.
Council member Berentine?
I want to thank everybody for coming out and congratulate all the people who got put on the boards and commissions. I, too, would like to explore the mayor position, and while it sounds awesome at the beginning, I'm watching some other municipalities try and struggle through this, and there are a lot of, a lot of issues that are surrounding this, a lot more than we... The warm fluffy thing of it, I love having the mayor elected, but there are a lot of unintended consequences with all of this. So I think it's worth having a discussion whether this council does, puts that on the ballot or not. It's, we can learn from some of the other people and what they're going through with all of this, because it's a lot more than just switching over a position. And I do like council member Olson's suggestion that before we go either, if we can find some additional money in the budget to go ahead and do anything with CML or whether we end up not having to do that. But before we spend that kind of money, either with NLC or CML, either this year or next, that we have some criteria on what we're focusing on. And hopefully, it goes in conjunction with the strategic plan, with our mission and vision and what we're doing so that we're all using that, you know, with some more purpose ahead of time on the, on the front end of it than just what we did on the back end, you know, what we experienced or what we went through so that there's some purpose, purpose for this. I think that's an excellent idea that she had. So, and that's it, that's all I have.
Thank you. Council member Wink? Thank you. Council member Martinez?
Yeah, I went on a tour of the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plant again, and it was incredible. I encourage everyone to take part in those tours. If you'd like to, you can just reach out to the appropriate groups. And just want to thank everyone who took time out of their day to take us on that nice tour.
Thank you. Council member Olson?
Thank you. I attended the report given by the Urban Land Institute last week and was very impressed and inspired by some of their big ideas. And it's always interesting to have a group of people who don't know our community as intimately and maybe stuck in our ways or thinking, and to have someone come in from the outside and say, wow, you should consider this or this. I really appreciated their work, and thanks to our staff that pulled them in, and it's great to get that grant. Doesn't mean we have to do what they said, but it certainly helps blow our minds a bit further open to think about possibilities. So I hope we'll have that on a study session. It sounded like that was maybe something we would do. We didn't pay for this, it's something that was given to us, but it seems like it would be helpful in the strategic planning to think through some of the things that they suggested. So when we meet on February, what, 27th, 26th, or whatever, I sure hope we've taken a look at some of that. I also had a couple of residents call me about some kind of a, an event that they went to last week that they were really concerned about. It was an organization that we have supported through our aid to other agencies, and they had an event that was offensive to some of the people there. And so the question came out, well, you all, they asked if it was our group, and I said, no, that's not a group, that's a nonprofit that's established in our community on their own. They said, but you give money to them, why don't you have any responsibility to that group? And I was, all of a sudden, it made me think about what I worry about the most with some of our aid to other agencies and having a group that we give money to do something that is offensive to us or is against the law or whatever. And I would think, this year, we said we were going to talk about aid to other agencies way ahead of the budget thing. So I just want to make sure we get on our docket what we're doing there and rethinking it before it comes upon us again. So I think I answered the citizens' just fine to say, you know, things are going to go haywire at some things, you can't control it.
Absolutely. So we'll put that on the agenda. Thank you.
I did forget one thing. Could I just ask really quick?
Yes.
For a couple of weeks ago, a couple of meetings ago, I think I brought up potentially having a moratorium on any more of the PEDs. I would like a study session for that to be discussed. I think the Pearl Street, the vote that we had on that, and then the community coming out, the Tufts one, and the concern from the city attorney on us having a process, and the scoring sheet that she did, what we kind of wanted to do, whether we even wanted to do that or not. And then we also have a meeting soon with the Planning and Zoning Board. So I would like that to at least be addressed as soon as possible. I don't want people thinking that they're investing in this community, believing that they can get something like that through. If that is not the will of the community to have it go that direction, then both sides are, we're upsetting the community and we're wasting people's time and investment. And we have like four or five of them that were on the docket all of a sudden that I saw, and I go, where did these come from when planning and zoning hasn't even met since September? So I think we need to come up with some process and have that conversation first. So I'd like that to be put on the, and I'll be bringing it up at the next council meeting.
Okay.
Hopefully, we can at least spend a few minutes talking about it in the next study session, and that's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I just want to thank staff for all that they've done and do for us. I do, the ULI thing was great. The tour actually was great, and Amy and I were talking about, we did the whirlwind tour two years ago, and it was just way over our heads. And all of a sudden, this time, things just came together. And so it was a great meeting. But anyway, thank you so much. Is there any city managers' report?
Thank you, mayor and council. I just have one item. Later on this week, I'll be attending the Colorado City County Management Association annual meeting. That's Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. In my absence, Mr. Wolf will be the acting city manager. And Mr. Wolf, again, wanted to take one more stab on the community strategy sessions with you, if we can just get some clarity on that.
Thank you. Just really briefly, I wanted to make sure that you all are comfortable with us advertising those community sessions in March. Again, just very broadly about kind of vision for Anglerwood, knowing we'll have to work with you on exactly what those sessions look like. But we wanted to make sure, we were trying to identify two sites that were outside of the city center here. One, we were looking at potentially doing at Anglerwood High School, and the other at Swedish. We have not confirmed those locations. But again, just wanted to make sure you're comfortable with that general direction before we begin advertising those sessions widely.
Council member Olson?
I have a question about how are you going to get the word out about it? I'm in favor of them, I was supportive of it first time around. So we don't have a citizen going out, but it would just be electronic mostly, or?
Probably mostly social media. We'll be working with our communications department on exactly the medium. We may be able to do some mailings. We'll have to look at total budget and scope of that. But ideally, as widely as possible, those are, those will be important for the development of your strategic plan.
I was just thinking that if we could, if we are doing a mailing, adding the ADUs to...
A little two-sider.
Don't want to mix, miss, mix people up too much or confuse them, but I, I don't know.
So when are we talking about? Early March, or?
Two dates identified in the Citizen are March 7th and March 15th. Those are in the eve, those will be in the evening.
It'll be tight to be on the same page by then. Okay.
I'm fine with it.
Seeing enough nods that we'll move forward.
Okay, all right, thank you. City attorneys' report?
Nothing to report.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.
Yeah, it's really hot. Or it may be...
I bet it's this.
For...
Oh, you know what? Probably because I thought I'd...